All right, all right, all right. Welcome, everyone, to the June 14th, 2023 City Vdina Planning Commission meeting. It's a little less smoky in here, so I'm glad everyone could make it in person. Say it every time, but on behalf of the Planning Commission, welcome, and we're grateful that you're here, whether it's in person or tuning in remotely. Your curiosity, participation, and feedback is instrumental as we navigate change here in Edina, specifically in terms of how people want to use their land. For those who don't know, the City, the Planning Commission is appointed by the City Council, and we're here to interpret the comprehensive plan, which is something we also help put together and update every 10 years. So when it comes to land use, we're the gatekeepers of that legacy in Edina, and we look to our residents to provide us insight and feedback, so we make good factual decisions on matters. All right. Another important point to bring up before we start is the city is committed to receiving, hearing, and listening to your feedback on matters. We've been collecting input through our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org, and it's important that everyone knows that if you've said something, we've received it and we've listened. And all feedbacks considered equally, so if there's something tonight and you've spoken about it, you don't have to share your input again, but if you're here and you would like to, we welcome that, too. So we have one public hearing tonight, and we'll get into the process of what to expect there. But for anyone tuning in remotely, if you want to get ready for that, you can provide testimony at the public hearing, and to do so, you need to call 786-496-5601 and enter conference PIN 680-8653. And when it's your turn to speak, or you'd like to speak, get in the queue, you push star one, and then the operator will let you know it's your chance to speak, and you'll have three minutes to speak, and we'll let you know when your time's up. All right. So with that, we'll get going. Call the meeting to order. Next on the agenda, we have roll call.
Commissioner Felton.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner who?
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bornstein.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here.
Next item, we have the approval of tonight's meeting agenda, so welcome a motion.
I'll move to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of the meeting minutes from our prior planning commission meeting, which was May 24th, 2023. Similarly, if there's a motion to approve, I'd welcome it.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right, next, we have the part of our agenda for community comment, so this is the chance for any residents who are here in person and would like to speak about a matter that is not on tonight's agenda. You can come up to a podium and speak. You'd have three minutes, so when the light turns green, you can start. When it turns amber, you've got 30 seconds left, and when it turns red, your time's up, and we'll let you know to wrap up. Is anyone here for community comment? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of tonight's agenda and meeting. We'll move right to our public hearing. So as mentioned, we got just the one public hearing tonight, and it's B 2307. It's a variance request for 4236 Scott Terrace. For those not familiar with this process, give you a quick rundown of what to expect. So an applicant or developer would like to do something that doesn't jibe with our laws or zoning, and so they put in an application to the city. The city does its research, puts together a staff report with several findings in it and recommendations. Tonight, city staff will present, based on those, on that report, to us. The Planning Commission, we will ask some questions, then we'll turn it over to the applicant to provide their own presentation if they'd like to, followed by other questions or clarifications from us, after which we will open it up for a public hearing, and that is your chance to speak about this matter on tonight's agenda. After the public hearing closes, we will deliberate, and we will make a recommendation either to approve or deny the request based on our findings. With that, I'll turn it over to Planner Ocker. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair members of the Planning Commission, this is a variance request. However, it is a modification of an existing approval that occurred in 2021, and I think some of you may have been here when that occurred. So the property is located at 4236 Scott Terrace. It is north of Morningside Road and south of West 42nd Street, is on the west side, as highlighted. The home is a Rambler with a tuck-under two-car garage. This is a photo of it as it exists today. We also have an existing survey. It doesn't show the lot width on this diagram, but the lot is about 49 feet wide, so it's a little under 50 feet. The required side yard setbacks are five feet. You can see that there is a generous setback along the north side at 14 and 1/2 feet approximately, and then on the south side, they are closer than the minimum five-foot side yard setback. They're at 4.3 feet. They also, the house does not meet the average front yard setback of the homes on either side. If you've been down Scott Terrace or down many of the streets on Morningside, there are homes that are further back or closer. It's a very unique and diverse neighborhood in terms of housing styles, periods of construction, also lot sizes and shapes. So the original proposal in 2021 was to put a second floor over that existing one-story home. It would include a slight bump out in the back, two-foot cantilever over the second floor. There's currently a cantilever on the first floor that you see as the dash line. They would introduce a cantilever to the north. They would maintain that existing non-conforming setback on the south side, introduce a porch, which porches actually can overlap into the front yard setback by 80 square feet, so that did not require variance. They had a wider sidewalk coming up with some retaining walls. It was a flat roof that was proposed for the structure, so it was going to be a second floor above that first floor at the same non-conforming setback along the south side, and then also the non-conforming setback along the front. However, since that time, since 2021, the property owners have looked at the house, the structure of the house, how it could hold up that second floor. They determined that it wasn't structurally feasible to just build a second floor on top of the existing first floor, and that they would require more than 50% wall removal, which then triggers the house being considered a new home and subject to all current setback standards, which would mean, including the foundation, would have to be moved to maintain the required setbacks, and then move further back also to maintain that front yard setback. So they redesigned. It's basically the same plan. It's a two-story home above that existing non-conforming foundation. It's just that they're taking down that first floor now, and then also they decided that the pitched roof was not a practical solution for them. So this is that north elevation of the original plan that had been approved in 2021, and then the, sorry, did I say north elevation? That was a south. This is the north elevation, and then the rear, which is the west elevation. So this, then, is their new proposal, which is really very similar to what was approved in 2021, except for the fact that they've had to remove everything down to the floor cap, and for sustainability reasons also, they would like to maintain that existing non-conforming foundation and build on top of it. And also, it will require, it will require less site alterations. They're not going to have as much of a grading piece over in the front yard area, even though they could do that with their old plan. I mean, they are allowed to do that. It doesn't affect the variances at all. But this shows that pitched, low-pitched roof. There were two variances involved in the previous request, which had to do with the front yard setback and the side yard setback to maintain that nonconformity. In this instance, there are actually three variances requested because to put the overhang into that setback area, they would need to maintain a three-foot setback, and they're requesting a 1.2-foot side yard setback variance in order to have that pitched roof with the overhang. It's very similar to what is existing on the first floor currently with the existing home. So this is the survey of the new construction. Again, it's very similar to the approved plan in 2021. The proposed porch appears to be smaller. There's a smaller access stairway up to that porch, but all other parts of the plan are very similar to the plan that was approved in 2021. Here's an elevation of that front that's being proposed, showing that pitched roof as opposed to a flat roof, and then you have the south elevation, north elevation, and rear elevation. So this is the compliance table, just illustrating the requirements. Again, south side yard should be five feet. They'll maintain that three, that 4.3-foot setback. They will be introducing an overhang into that area, which currently there is an overhang with that first floor, and then the east side or front yard setback variance that they're requesting, given that the average of the homes on either side is deeper. And this is a comparative to the compliance table that was approved back in 2021. The only difference is the overhang that will be in that south setback area. So the recommendation for modification or for a variance for the project, approval is subject to the following findings: that the proposal meets the variance criteria, it maintains all of the requirements in the R1 zoning district with the exception of the non-conforming side and front yard setbacks, the practical difficulty is caused by the existing location of the home and the existing non-conforming setbacks, the proposed rebuild on the existing foundation is a reasonable use with the location not self-created. That was an original construction of a non-conforming side and front yard setback, and was built prior to our current code requirements, and granting the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. If you're familiar with Morningside, it seems like, I've been told by residents, that it seems to be able to absorb any sort of housing style, and that's actually the charm of Morningside. And the character of Morningside is that it's maybe inconsistent as opposed to consistency as far as the home styles. Approval is subject to the following conditions: the survey and plans date stamped May 12th, 2023. Comments and conditions listed in the May 18th, 2023 engineering memo. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Director Ocker, thank you. Can you maybe call up the compliance table? And yeah, thank you. The east side front street setback, 42.56. That city standard, could you go through how that number? I know you mentioned about properties either side. What distance, or is it a block either direction, or one or two properties?
Sure. It's, the 42.56 feet reflects the average front yard setback of the home to the north and the home to the south, or they also have the option to average all of them along that side of the block between intersections. Scott Terrace has a very varied front yard setback. It was not to their advantage to use the entire average on the block. It still isn't in compliance with the average of the homes on either side, so they're, they're just not in compliant with either/or. I don't believe they're the closest on the block, but they are also not in compliant with that average.
Thank you. My experience, I mean, is that that methodology is kind of, just comes up some wildly varying numbers, and it's, I mean, it's important to understand, because sometimes if it's just one property either side, you could have an enormous difference.
Yes, especially in Morningside. There's a lot of variation throughout Morningside.
Yeah, and to me, it's most important, just a visual, to see how it feels when you're out there, too. Thank you.
Yeah, can you just speak again to, was there a reason why the flat roof wasn't feasible and why we're going to the pitched roof? Because is it the pitching of the roof that's causing the additional, basically intrusion into the setbacks on the side?
The over, you're allowed an overhang, but unfortunately, because it's so close for them to have a pitched roof and to have an overhang, they're overlapping into that setback a little bit. The existing home has a pretty deep overhang, and does, I'm not exactly sure how deep it is. It's probably as deep, if not deeper, than this one, so the existing condition on that first floor currently is very similar to this. I believe, you know, they've looked at alternatives, but the flat roof was not something that was feasible for them. You could probably ask that to the applicant.
So the east side setback, that is to the existing, is to the face of the existing garage?
There's an overhang of the first floor. The garage is set back just a little bit, and it probably shows up better with...
And in the new drawings, there's no overhang on the first floor, just on the second floor? Because that is, so the new, the existing first floor walls weren't structural enough to support the second floor.
Right.
So they're taking those down. So now it looks like they're taking the garage elevation, going straight up from the foundation, and creating a new. Rather than having that front setback that was there, they're going straight up, and now they're going to have a setback on the second floor.
Correct. They would like to repeat, to just have some definition, so it's not a flat.
On the face, yeah.
And it, I mean, you can see that the existing house has that on the first floor. It also has the deeper overhangs. It's almost as if they're taking that first floor, putting it as a second floor, and filling the difference in between, but it was a structural issue for them. It's also more sustainable for them to maintain the existing foundation, and then there's a lot less site work as well.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
I did forget to mention that we did receive one comment from a neighbor that is across the street and slightly over, through Better Together Edina supporting it, and then the neighbor directly to the south, who's most impacted, did call in, and they supported as well.
Thank you.
One thing that came up today during our work session was talking about variances and then really additions, or in this case, my mind goes to the eight-inch overhang on the second floor, right? So now that's similarly protruding even further into like the existing variance or the existing footprint of the house, right? Is there anything, I mean, to my knowledge, I couldn't see anything in the code in terms of defining, making the current exception like worse in terms of setbacks? Is it really just open to the, make sure the conditions are satisfied, you know, the relieving practical difficulties, et cetera? Do we have, do we have any definition around that in terms of, all right, you know, we already don't meet the setback requirement of five feet, but now we're going to go another foot or addition? Do we have anything prohibiting that called out? I'm not really aware. I know the question came up today during the training in terms of making it worse, but...
And I guess in this situation, I don't see that it's making the situation worse, because what they're doing is they're replicating, if you're referring to the overhang into the side yard piece or the front yard?
No, the front, the second floor protruding an additional eight inches for architectural reasons, right? For visual appeal.
Yeah, and I think what they're doing, and they did this, you can see for the existing dwelling, they do have that, and that the garage is further back, and then they're replicating that when they were doing that second floor addition, but then structurally it's difficult to support that, given, given that the foundation is further back. So, let me just see here. They've instead extended it, it's really replicating what they have currently on the first floor. That's what they were doing. And I guess I, from looking at the surveys, they really are not getting, you know, it would just, if it were any closer, it would not be, you know, it'd be diminutive. It's very small.
Okay. I guess I, when I think of this, you know, it's like, all right, well, what would prevent them from, and now it's eight inches, right? The second floor projecting an additional eight inches over the first. Is there anything that says it can't go 12, 14, 16? How, I mean, and how much more that second floor sticks out from the first floor in terms of the separate requirements with that? Just laid out again in terms of what they're asking for with the variance and meeting the justification piece of this.
For this particular design, you would be approving this. They could not get a permit for anything but this. So, you know, when they're submitting for a permit application, it's this design, so it would be exactly what they're showing you this evening. If there was a design modification, they'd have to come back to you if they were asking for more or an additional one, but if this were a different, a different request, I guess it'd be at your discretion whether you would agree that that was appropriate to have, you know, that slight bump out to break up the massing of it. Am I answering that question?
Maybe I could add, it moves, so there's the practical difficulty, the location of the existing structure. In terms of whether they bump out closer to the road, kind of falls into that reasonable use category. Do you believe that that little bump out is reasonable, given the practical difficulties that they have?
Yes, yes.
So a couple of things to add. So, I mean, currently, they're non-conforming, and they're making the situation a little, I thought it was...
A little better than before, right? That's eight inches less, or is it eight inches more? I thought the number was lower. Regardless, part of Commissioner's other question is, like, isn't there still a bucket in the city code? You know, it's the 80 square feet for a front porch that you kind of have some flexibility to, you know, apply, even if it non-conforms? Then there's something else with like 200 square foot of an addition that you're kind of grandfathered in, and could you speak to that? I mean, is that, if it is further non-conforming, then you have to get a variance, or can you do 200 square feet anywhere? What are the terms of that?
Yes, I can speak to the 200 square foot requirement. For a non-conforming setback, you can, you can't expand closer into the setback with that provision, but you can maintain that same setback up to 200 square feet, right?
So you could go along it?
Yes.
Essentially, okay. So, I mean, there are, there are ways people can use their nonconformity to, I don't know, get a little creative. Any other questions? Clarifications? Now would be the time, thank you for the presentation. We welcome the applicant if they'd like to say anything or give a short presentation. We certainly have questions, I'm sure.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, I don't have a presentation.
Well, just introduce yourself, address.
Yeah, this is a green, are we good? Can you hear me?
Yep.
So Joe Becker, homeowner of 4236 Scott Terrace. I don't have a whole lot more to present. I appreciate all the time and effort that you put into this, Chris, and respect the process that this goes through, so thank you for the time. I do just have, I didn't bring enough copies, but just letters from 14 different neighbors or just quotes of support, as well as, you know, emails as the last 48 hours of support of neighbors on both, both sides of the house that would be impacted the most. I could give those to you, Lauren, or however the best way to do that is to pass along. Sorry. Sorry, I didn't bring it.
If not, you're just going to have to stand on the thing and hold it above your head.
Yeah, so basically, the red dot here is our home, and then all these little lines you see are lines to all the neighboring homes, and then what would be very difficult to see is on the left is just a quote that they sent back, not an email, in terms of support for the project. So that's one document I could share, and then, it's probably hard to see.
All that smoke in the air.
Yeah, exactly. So then this letter here is from our neighbor's dad, Cindy Wilson, who lives at 4238 Scott Terrace, so they're the ones with the setback on the south side, in support of it, and this is a letter from Amy Harper at 4234 Scott Terrace, who lives on the opposite side of me on the same side of the road, in support of it as well. So I just want to share that I feel a lot of details were covered from Chris, and love the neighborhood, love the city, just as our family's growing, it's just, we want to be able to stay in the house, and without demoing the whole house, felt like this is our best way to keep the foundation and kind of make it a good house for us to live in, kind of let our kids go through, and for us to retire, and so that's all I've got. Hoping any questions that you all have, or any other clarity.
We did have a question, maybe based off of the pitch of the house. I mean, could you walk through kind of the history of, you know, what was approved and how we got to here, and just some of the details that were discussed?
From back in 2021?
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. So, you know, in 2021, we were, we were kind of ready to go through with the project. Our architect at the time was, did all of his work out in Las Vegas, as well as California, had been recently moved to the area. He was originally designed as a stucco home with a flat roof, after consulting with many builders, including the current one that's represented here with Joseph from Fox Homes. Just a couple of things, just didn't feel good in terms of the engineering, the structure. Again, it was stucco, which is the cheapest method to do it in Arizona and California for an exterior, so you see a little bit of exterior change. And then just the flat roof itself. I know there's plenty of commercial buildings that have flat roofs, but, you know, this is not a commercial building or meant to be a commercial building, and so it also kind of maintains a little bit of the same look. We have a low-pitched roof. We went as low as we could, you know, we're not, there's no issues with the height of the house, but we went as low as we could. I think it's two and a half by 12, or three by 12, as low as, you know, the shingle company will allow for like a warranty still. And then just to go down to the foundation, it was, just came down to like a structural thing. It just didn't feel like the house was built in 1963, I think, to have a second floor. It wasn't meant to start in the current state and then add a second floor, and just felt like foundation-wise that there'd be concerns there. So based on the builders, let's get it down to the foundation, get a new trust system in, core fill the current foundation to make it as structurally sound as possible. And then just being in Minnesota, it just felt like a more of a pitched roof was a better for rain and runoff and all of that. Last thing we want to do is deal with water issues in the home, so.
Thank you. That helps with some new commissioners, too, so it always helps understanding
For sure.
where there's changes and why, and that's what we're helping to try to navigate, too.
Of course.
Any questions from other commissioners?
Just clarification real quick, and I know it seems silly to be hung up on, but this, the architectural projection is an additional eight inches beyond the existing footprint, right?
So the...
On the second floor.
So the second floor, it's, I couldn't tell you now, it's more than six and it's less than 12 of what we have today for a bump out that's right above our garage. So right above the garage, we have a bump out that, I don't have the exact measurement, but now that bump out is just elevated one... but now that bump out is just elevated one more level up. And so our garage now goes straight up. Instead of having the bump out just above the garage, that bump out is now above the first floor. But, you know, within an inch or two of what that exists, I don't want to tell you that it's exactly eight, because I don't know that for certain, but it's, we're not jumping up to 18 from eight. It's, it's either seven or eight, seven to nine now, and it's going to eight. So it's, it's really close. I don't know if you saw it in the plan.
Yeah, it's actually as built, I'm so sorry.
Uh, thank you.
Sorry. My name is Joseph. I'm with Fox Homes. Current as built are 12 inches cantilevered over the garage to the east setback. And we're taking it and pushing it back to eight inches. So it's actually a reduction, plus the soffit overhang on the roof is reduced from the current 30, 30 inches to 24 inches. So all and round, if you look at the house from the top or any of the sides and everything, it's actually a reduction in the footprint overall. So it's just, I figured that would be helpful information.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I was only confused because it said that the existing structure was non-conforming and measured 39.1, and said the second floor will go an additional eight inches. So I was like, all right, well.
That's a fair, fair question.
Yeah, so, sorry, I just wanted to make sure I was very clear on this and-
Yeah, no, it's fair.
Yeah, I mean, even the little details, they do matter. Yeah, Commissioner Miranda.
So just to clarify, what, what happened is that the, the existing home is more in non-compliance than either of these two alternatives, right? Because it's 30 inches, the overhang's 30 inches.
We're reducing the overhang, and we're reducing that front bump out.
So the confusion comes from having this intermediary 2021, which actually solved the overhang problem, but you want to go back to something that's closer to the existing house. So, so what we have now is in between what was there before.
Sure.
Okay, is that, okay, great. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Lou, yeah. Any other clarifications? You?
Well, it's not a clarification.
Or a question, yeah, or a comment?
And I'm, I'm assuming, I mean, I've got some friends that live in stucco houses and absolutely love them because they're really nice and easy to maintain. But it might be expensive to do compared to some other siding. So I'm wondering if some of that was budgetary now to?
The stucco was not, not budgetary. I mean, to say like it was the, the sole decision, was that a factor? Yeah, for sure. I mean, there's like two stucco companies in, that seem to do stucco in Minnesota, and like, they seem to know that, that, but, so I would say that's part of it. I mean, the, the stucco, I would say, from a maintenance and overall, like longevity of materials versus some of the other materials that are more built for Minnesota that are longer lasting. So the, the stucco was, was not a cost factor. I would say it was more of a change in, change in architect and just design and taste. That we would probably, we probably came here probably a little premature in, in 2021. I mean, we weren't, I think we were just making sure that what was being designed was, was going to pass, where we probably weren't necessarily exactly ready to go to permits. We're here, like, our plan is to, you know, if approved, go to permits and, and start this project that's been going on for, we've tried to start many years ago, pre-pandemic even.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions or comments or clarification, sorry? Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for proposing. Now, now is the time for our public hearing, portion of the public hearing. So as mentioned before, I'll give an opportunity for anyone to tune in remotely to call and join. It's 786-496-5601. Enter conference PIN 680-8653-POUND, and then press star one to get in the queue to speak. While you do that, we are going to open the floor here to anyone who is in person and would like to speak about this matter. As mentioned before, you have three minutes. Come up to a podium. Light will turn green for you to start, yellow for 30 seconds, red when your time's up. State your full name and address. Anyone here that would like to speak? Hard to see through the haze. With that, we will move to the remote portion of the public hearing. Is there anyone in the queue that is waiting to speak?
No, we don't have anyone waiting to speak. Due to the delay in the broadcast, I would recommend waiting one minute just to make sure we don't miss anyone. So I will start the timer now.
This is a long minute here.
It's been one minute, and nobody has joined the call, so I think we are safe to proceed. Thank you.
All right, I guess time seems longer when it's so smoky. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
To close the public hearing? Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved, the public hearing is closed. Doesn't mean the public hasn't spoken, like to, I guess, just acknowledge that the applicant went well out of their way to get support and show support of this matter with pretty much every directly affected party. So thank you. With that, I'll open it to the rest of the planning commission to deliberate on this. Any comments, votes of support? Now's the time to discuss.
I have a couple of comments. I did look through both sets of drawings and do appreciate the handsomeness of the first set. You know, that's neither here nor there. But just wanted, just wanted to recognize that I do, I do think they were very nice. This street is, I mean, this, the new project is very much like the existing house, and that existing house is like the only one kind of like that on that street. But there's also like 20 different unique houses on that street. There's an extremely large house on that street. There's a lot of one and a half story houses on the street. There is one close to the street. There's one like really far back on the street. There's a lot of long houses on the street. There's a, there's a flat roof house on the street. So it's a very unique street. You know, so it'd be hard, I think, you know, to turn this down for me, but open to listening to what you all think.
Sure, other comments? Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, so kind of what I was alluding to before, I mean, this is basically, if we, if they didn't have the previous approval, this is basically making the existing house, the setbacks from the existing house slightly better. So six inches in each direction or whatever. So it's hard to argue with that. I mean, when you have an older neighborhood like Morningside, and the houses were created long before setbacks were created and such, you know, going up a story and keeping the same footprint, you know, was a pretty common thing to do. And I, I, you know, kind of, the way you said, it's just, it, it doesn't stand out in the neighborhood. It doesn't, it, I mean, I just don't see any real problem with this. So I'd be voting in favor of this.
Commissioner Padilla?
I think the modifications that you're asking for are small. I think they're efficient. I think they're very reasonable, and you have my full support.
Looking this way.
No, I, I find the staff report, you know, to be sound and, and completely clear. So I think that findings, as the staff found them, you know, I agree completely.
All right. Yeah, I, I agree as well. I think there's options to do something more disruptive. So to, to keep as much of what you got is a noble thing, and I appreciate that. And the creativity around that versus starting from a clean slate, this is tougher to do, but it's more responsible. So thank you. With that, I'd welcome a motion if anyone had one.
I have a motion to approve the variance request for 4236 Scott Terrace.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Congratulations and good luck building soon this time.
Yeah.
Thanks. All right, that concludes the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, well ahead of other meetings timewise. So thank you, everyone. We are on to our reports and recommendations. We have one item on this portion of the agenda, and that is to discuss our upcoming, dreadfully, how, how is this already happening, 2024 Planning Commission work plan. So do we, I mean, is this more of a discussion? Do you have us, like a slide to look at or previous one, or do we just want to talk about?
Yeah, I thought maybe we'd just tee it up, talk about it, because we have four months to put this together. Staff is ahead of the game this year in getting this to you. Usually, we're starting it later in the summer. So we have to have this completed by September. But I just thought I would throw it out there to the commission and ask you to start thinking about things we might want to work on for 2024. I'll just quickly run through what I've got here, just a draft form for you to, to think about.
Can you, can you start with the things we're currently working on that will carry through?
I've, I'm assuming, when I put this together, I was assuming we're going to finish with things, and the things that I thought are going to continue into next year are included here.
Okay.
I figure we'll, yeah.
All right, thanks.
So the first one is our, you know, just our usual land use applications review, because that is our primary function. And the second, and this was one that was put into the parking lot this year, and we've talked about this the last few months, Commissioner Miranda especially. And that's the, consider the potential, the areas of potential change. I think this, I think the, just things that have come up over the last year, it seems to be resonating with the city council. So I'm confident this one will stay on. But you never know. But it's that considering, what areas do we want to look at in the next update of the comprehensive plan for doing a small area plan? The third is follow-up on the Cahill District Plan. So that's one that will be on your agenda here the next couple of months, assuming we get the plan approved this year. I'm assuming there will be some type of follow-up, whether it's zoning standards, whatever that may be. So kind of a holding, holding spot for that. If the plan gets approved, you know, we could start to look at what implementation, what things we want to accomplish in 2024, you know, looking at the plan, what do we want to change or not change? The fourth item is the parking. It's the continuation of that parking ordinance. Not sure exactly what that looks like. It is on our work plan for this year. So depending on what we'll accomplish this year, this would continue into next. And then the fifth item is taken from the climate action plan as recommended by our, and that's taking a look at some of our parking areas. I'm not sure exactly what that's going to look like, but this seemed to fit with the planning commission out of her recommendation. So I guess the purpose of putting it in here, this is the language that was suggested from the climate action plan. Over the next few months, we may want to take a look at that and formulate it, and what do, what do we want to do for a, for a planning commission initiative for 2024. So those are the five items I've come up with. Feel free to, if you think of something in the next few weeks, months, let me know. I can add it to the plan. And then, the, the way this usually works for new commissioners is we will discuss items, how much can we accomplish in 2024, take things off, add things, before finalizing it in September. So from time to time, probably at least once a month, I would include this on our regular agenda, and we can discuss it further, further. And if we decide we want to have a work session at some point to go through it in a little more detail, we can do that also. So tonight is really just teeing it up to get you thinking about next year.
Last year, we talked about sustainability piece. Is that the same thing that you're talking about with the climate action?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Good to see the one, the, the Cahill District Plan follow-up. Is that to the smaller area plan review that was just completed, or is this the 70th in Cahill?
Yeah, so this, this is the big study that's underway, the whole, the big, the whole of the Cahill District.
Sort of kind of the two areas, kind of-
Yes.
-meld of, of those.
Yep. Yep. So it's taking whatever implementation steps come out of that plan, assuming that it does get approved this year. And what that follow-up is, I don't, we don't know today, but we can hone in that.
And then a revisit to the original small area plan of the 70th in Cahill?
Well, that pretty well stays in place. So if there's something that we want to look at from that plan, we can do that as well. It's a kind of all one package now.
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Padilla?
And are you assuming that the, we will be advancing an ADU ordinance so that that won't be on there anymore?
I'm assuming that we will get that drafted-
Okay.
-and presented to the city council. You know, if they, if it, if it bleeds into next year, you know, we will, we'll have to add it. But I, the goal is to get that completed this year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else on top of people's mind? Commissioner Miranda?
So affordable housing is, is a important topic, and that's the HRA. But how much say or how much advice does the planning commission give to the city council in terms of location or distribution or that sort of thing about where affordable housing goes within the city? Is that something that we could look at?
Through the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan, you know, if there's changes that you want to pick about in that regard, like something you can start to pick about?
Well, yeah, I'm thinking more in terms of like a policy, like, you know, to have it evenly distributed through the city, or, you know, have zones or, I mean, not to like ghettoize it, I don't mean that kind of zone, but, you know, like splitting up the city and saying, you know, 25% has to be in this quarter of the city, and, you know, that sort of thing. Is that something that?
Well, again, that's, you know, to divide it up equally and have equal amount of affordable housing, say in the northwest quadrant, where it's predominantly single-family homes, you know, if it's a unit per unit, how you do that through the zoning. It's really through the, the zoning where we can affect that change.
Okay.
Does that tie kind of into the areas of potential change? I mean, as like a key factor?
I mean, it could be a part, a part of the discussion.
But it's definitely not to that level of policy or anything that you're talking about. I mean, that'd be-
No, no, no. I mean, you know, it's gonna, areas of change would have to deal with, you know, goals from the comprehensive plan would have to deal with density, transportation, affordability, you know, all those things would have to come into play. So all that's part of it, yeah, sure.
Anything else anyone's thinking about? I mean, this is usually the time where you start thinking of ideas, stuff that's been brought up over the last year, something you've been reading that's happening elsewhere that you might want to consider. I know there's plenty of stuff out there that has been shared with the planning commission. Might just be good recommendation, just do a little homework, look through some emails that were sent. I mean, you know, as we gear up for the comprehensive plan update, which will happen sooner than you think, I mean, that'll start in four years, right? About or just over?
More like three.
Three? So it happens a lot quicker than 20- Three? So, it happens a lot quicker than 2030. So, as we gear up for that, I mean, is there areas of Edina that could emulate other areas? I mean, you think of how City Minneapolis did a pretty major update to theirs the last comprehensive plan. Is Edina ready for some of that or part of that? We should just start thinking about it, and this would be the time to talk about it and/or put something on here. It might even, I mean, the goal, kind of like ADUs, it wasn't necessarily put an ordinance for this, it was look into this. So, you know, if there's something we want to study and use staff resources to do it, this, this is the, this is the kind of place where it, I didn't come to mind just from that babble. Yeah.
Well, it's interesting to think that the three of us who have been most senior on the commission and who helped with the, well, I didn't do so much, but the two of you especially who did so much on the comprehensive plan the last time around will have been grandfathered off the commission by then, right?
It'll be close.
Okay.
At least for me, it'll be close. If I stick around. Jerry, you're up what next year? Because I filled in for someone a month into their role. I basically can serve like 12 years, which is ridiculous. So, I don't know if I'll do it, but we'll see. So, if I do that, yeah, who knows? But yeah, that's the non-ideal part of a 10-year update is you really don't get any legacy people to help just catch people up.
Turnover, there's no like intermediate people. It's like, we've been here the longest, and then there's nothing, kind of, so.
But I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure everyone heard about it on the work session today too, is, you know, the, what everyone says is as soon as it's accepted, it's out of date, the comprehensive plan. So, a lot of our, our zoning hasn't caught up to the comprehensive plan, which hasn't caught up to like where we're actually at. So, this, this is our opportunity really to, to jump on things that we shouldn't wait till, you know, 2030 to implement. So, the ADU is a good example of something that, you know, we could keep kicking that till the next update. But, you know, there's, there's a good, good enough tailwind to try to go for it now. Anything else?
You expound on that. So, you say some of our zoning doesn't conform to our current plan, right?
Yeah, so, so for instance, the, what we just looked at last week, the, the project on the west side, or the east side of 169. So, how that's currently zoned doesn't match the comprehensive plan, which guides it for more of a residential type of area.
It said office residential?
Or for office slash residential. Another thing is the Kevin Key site that was in the comprehensive plan for residential, but it's currently in automotive use. Someone's proposing a restaurant. So, some of, one of these goals, that area of potential change, we really need to rectify that. And, and I know the training today, it's like, where those conflict, the comprehensive plan wins. So, if someone wants to propose something that's consistent with that, but not consistent with zoning, you can rest in that. But yeah, what is the process, Kerry, for when we update the zoning? And why it doesn't happen sometimes?
Yeah, so the office residential, that's intentional that we didn't go back and create zoning districts, because it's the entire west side of France, Pentagon Park, parts of Cahill, and then the far west end of town. The thinking behind that was residential's possible in those districts, but it would be on a case-by-case basis, basically a decision made by, with the recommendation of the Planning Commission, decision made by the city council in its legislative ability to approve a zoning. So, if they didn't feel that it fits, they could say no to that.
So, for instance, with the Kevin Key site, that was kind of an anomaly, like we, we, I mean, that kind of brought up some of this stuff of, you know, we need to vet out and find these anomalies of where they don't match, or they're not at least somewhat compatible. And maybe that's one of very few examples, but we, we really don't know. Staff probably knows more, but we haven't looked into it officially, right? Because it hasn't been on the work plan.
I don't believe there's any others like Kevin Key's. But yeah, that is definitely an anomaly.
Okay. So, bad unique example, I guess.
Yeah.
So, how proactive are we in that, in that approach, right? And so, if we find a conflict with the comprehensive plan of what exists today, right, my understanding would be we'd be more reactionary than proactive in this, right? Somebody makes a proposal, we say, does it align with the comprehensive plan, yes or no? We decide there, not necessarily go into an area and say, this doesn't align, now we're going to come in and rezone it because, right? How, what is the balance there?
It, at least, and Kerry, you can speak to it, but unfortunately, the burden is pretty much on applicants and developers to bring that change forth. And a lot of that stuff happens quicker than we can update every 10 years. Even that update doesn't capture everything we'd want to necessarily. And so, this areas of potential change, it's probably something that should happen in between updates, you know, to just identify or pre-identify these areas, hey, should we get more proactive here, or do we want to just keep getting development proposals in that area that aren't consistent with the comprehensive plan? And, I mean, we've seen that until a small area plan gets created. And so, that's the importance of doing kind of those intermediary steps. Yeah, Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, so like for, for example, you know, developers coming to the city wanting to put housing in the greater Cahill District, not the small area plan area. That's what drove the creation of the Cahill District Greater District Plan, right? So, so we do react, you know, the city does react to those sort of situations. When it's clear that there's, it's a large area, there's a lot of developer interest, it's, it's hard to do, you know? And the same thing with, you know, on the east side of 169, you know, where to fit housing in there, you have to, you know, change the, and we're dealing with this, with this with ADUs also, is you have to change the sewer system to fit all these things. So, you know, developers may have interest, but you can't just like snap your fingers and say, okay, we're going to zone it today for that. There's, there's a lot of infrastructure things and whatever other areas that we were thinking about, or, or that came up, actually. Last year was in Grandview where they have the duplexes, well, it was duplexes, right? And there was some, you know, a developer wanted to come in and say, hey, you know, let's make this, you know, more multifamily, whatever. Should we, should we, do we do a spot rezoning? Do we rezone the whole thing? You know, so that's another gray area. It's on the edge of the Grandview District. It's not really in it. So, yeah, there's just all these kind of edge cases that come up that we, we need to look at, you know? And the E-line coming along the, you know, in two years, coming along France Avenue, there's a bunch of duplexes near the crosstown on France Avenue. And so, that, and they're, you know, pretty old, and I'm sure there's going to be some demand in that area for change also. So, you know, it's partly proactive, it's partly feeling what developers are coming to us with, and it's magic.
Yeah, and you touched on, one of the things you brought up specifically is instead of thinking of just distinct areas, but perhaps, or rather corridors too. Corridors have changed. So, like, say the E-line, I mean, do we rethink of France as more of a corridor instead of each of these nodes? Would it have the potential to have redevelopment along it versus at stops? And then that, maybe some of that was Vernon too with Kevin Key's. Vernon has quite a bit more density on it and, and otherwise completely R1 setting. So, you know, can we rethink infrastructure in that way? But yeah, it's mostly reactive. That's unfortunately our role, but, you know, this is our chance to try to be a little proactive. Anything else? Yeah.
Well, I think, I mean, you, you have to have the strategy, you have to have the things there. But the reactive part of it, I was reminded of a quote I heard this week, that culture eats strategy for breakfast. And I'm like, oh, yeah, that happens a lot. So, when they come, when projects come to you, right, it is what the developers are getting demand for at the moment, and it might not be something that we have thought about.
Yeah, great point. All right, so homework, and then Kerry, what's a, what's maybe a practical implementation of getting to, hey, this is our final work plan. Do we want to discuss this a couple of their meetings in between? Have a work session where we dedicate an hour or two? What are you thinking?
I think all of that.
Perfect. All right. So, we'll just, you know, take it on to a work session between now and then, maybe a couple of months out, give people a chance to do some reading and...
Yep. Yeah, I think minimum of one work session and probably two, three agendas over the next three, four months.
Okay. Thank you for being prompt and proactive in getting this to us instead of, oh, next week.
MJ helped with the prompt, prompting email. So, thanks to MJ too.
Whichever camera. So, are we good there? All right, we'll move to chair and member comments. Anything, anyone? Commissioner Padilla?
I would just like to say thank you for the training that we had earlier. It was helpful and it was educational. So, thanks a lot.
Oh, now, since you teed it up and people are like, what's going on? Maybe, could you give a rundown of what the training was? And great insight.
Do you want to, Kerry?
Sure. Yeah, so we had John Shardlow, we had John Shardlow in from Stantec, who's been in the planning field, working for cities, both in the, well, representing staff, planning commissions, developers, a vast amount of experience. In fact, he did a similar presentation in the virtual world a couple of years ago for Planning Commission and City Council. So, he, he provided a overview role of the Planning Commission, covering everything from rezonings, conditional use permits, PUDs, variances, open meeting law. Yeah, just a lot of the, kind of the planning 101, maybe planning 201. So, it is available on tape, and we've got the slide deck that I believe, I think Liz sent it out earlier this evening. So, if any follow-up questions to that, let me know.
Can you explain to our younger audience members what you mean by on tape?
Well, yeah, what form that, I, I'll let Liz take that one.
Sure. For our work sessions, they're only recorded with audio. So, after 48 business hours, it'll be posted on the city website. If you need it before then, communications can assist. But the presentation itself can be found in the packet too, if people want to look at that.
For maybe our new commissioners, were there any interesting or key takeaways from the, the training that are worth mentioning to audience members? Anything jump out, ring a bell?
I think his focus on just the legal standards governing the decisions was helpful. I think his focus on tailoring the discussion to those standards and not getting, this isn't really a problem we have, but not getting too far afield on like just a personal point of member interest or something like commissioner interest is maybe a more efficient way to go. He talked about structuring our discussion in a way that conforms to the different standards that need to be met, and then articulating, you know, even though it feels awkward articulating factual findings, or at least a factual basis for, you know, why we think the standards are met. These are all things I think we're doing already. But he, he just thought framing the discussion that we have around the standards was one helpful way to proceed. So, I don't know.
Awesome.
And as a lawyer, just, I think that, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I hope so. Thank you.
I guess to build on that a little bit in terms of wading through the, the legal process, one thing I wrote down, right, that, and I thought about it today as we reviewed this project, this variance request, and as he brought up, you know, this list of emails of all the people that supported him, right? And one thing that actually was hit on in our training today was that we shouldn't be taking the emotional piece from, from the neighborhood into it, you know, so much. It's like, yes, that's nice to see, but, you know, our job is to sort through, I wrote this down, through find and document relevant facts and interpret them according to applicable standards, right? So, despite, you know, if it's a bad request, even if all 48 neighbors around there are saying, we can't let that influence our decision, right? And that's something, it was a good reminder.
Great point, yeah.
Right? Because there can be a lot of outside pressure and a lot of, that can really tip the scale sometimes if you see all that come in and say, well, kind of have a tendency to overlook things more if the neighbors all say, ah, I'm fine with it, you know? Well, doesn't meet our ordinance, so we can't say yes.
That's a great point.
Oh, I did like John's comment about the comprehensive plan. I have, I have gone through it once. I haven't digested the whole thing yet. I'm going to go through it a few more times. But I appreciated the, you know, reliance on the comprehensive plan when it comes to some of these requests. Look, look at where the city wants to go.
Certainly. And that's, I mean, that's our opportunity really as a planning commission to be proactive. That's when we're helping make the laws essentially. And then the rest of the time, we're applying them, we're interpreting them. Commissioner Miranda, Padilla?
Kind of to your point about, you know, this is the law and we should be following the rules and everything. One thing that I've learned being on this commission and kind of living in the neighborhood that I do, you know, we've got all these regulations on, you know, setbacks, like we looked at tonight, right? And, but you have to understand that, and as a body, we have to understand that those setbacks were not always there. And as different neighborhoods developed, I mean, I'm, I live, I live in Morningside. And, you know, the, the lots were very narrow back then. And, you know, we had one, I don't think you were here for that, but a house was developed on Arden, which is just a block from where this proposal was, and it's on a corner. And so, if you look at the, by our current standards, the buildable area, you know, it's like a postage stamp. It's really tiny. So, we have to consider what the rules are, which obviously are very important, but also that some of these rules were created as the city grew. And when the city was growing the most, it was in this, you know, 60s, 70s, 50s, 60s, 70s. As the city grew west and the lots got bigger, you know, the, so the setbacks became larger and everything, you know, does that really fit in this neighborhood? And it's one of those things that, you know, there's no black and white, you know? It's something we have to kind of figure out. So, that was partly some of my comments on that today. So, just that, you know, you know, the, the, the standards are not, weren't handed down from God, you know? And, and, you know, so they've changed over time. How, how appropriate is it? And, you know, the staff always goes through, you know, the three rules that we, or four rules that we have to follow for that, because, you know, are there existing conditions and that sort of thing?
Well, the, my house was built in 59 in Braymar Hills, so I understand that the setbacks were, did not exist, because I don't think I am, part of my house conforms to existing setback requirements. So, yes, I am very well aware of those rules. But it kind of built on, you know, some of the rule, the ordinance coming down. It's like, well, if we get enough popular opinion against them, right, then the proper protocol is we should change the ordinance, right? Not necessarily just be granting variance, you know, after variance, after variance, after variance, cut back on those by changing the ordinance. So, it's like, that's what we should be pushing towards.
Yeah, that's a great example, because other work plans, we have just made it a point like, hey, this basement rule that we have of, you can't, you have to have a basement in the city, like, we change that as a result. So, there's certainly times where, yeah, you get hit with these rules, and then there's some commonality to them, and we need to, we need to change it.
Yeah, and if I could add to that, every, just about every work plan we've ever had at the Planning Commission, there's been zoning ordinance amendments. And then we list a bunch of them that we want to tackle. I didn't put that on here, so that might be something that we want to think about. What codes do we want to change?
Sure.
Staff will give that some thought too.
Yeah, at least over the last year, it hasn't been as evident as other years where... Commissioner Padilla?
I, I think another thing that John talked about is how important it is to both observe and maintain and stick with the due process, and how important it is in terms of maintaining the hearings and the decorum, and how that, we observe that and keep that, you know, community input, you know, is, is so important to our process. And we maintain very high standards around it. So, that's a good reminder as well.
I, I think he hit on and reiterated, you know, one public hearing is only required by state statute, and believes that it should happen at the Planning Commission only.
Mentioned that in case you missed it. I thought you, I mean, you already know that, but appreciate hearing it again.
Yeah. Just kind of had to bring it up. That's just something that might linger on to next year's work plan if we don't get a resolution or some sort of, I don't know, some sort of change in place, or at least an idea of what we're going to do this year. So, it's good to hear.
On that point, he was, he was talking about, I didn't completely understand. On that point, he was, he was talking about, I didn't completely understand, but he was talking about, he thought that was the ideal way to structure the public hearing process generally, and that if there was a particularly unique project working its way through the system or something that was abnormal or something came up after the public, or the planning commission process occurred, where there was new information that became relevant to the council's decision. He thought it would be possible for the council to like hold a limited public hearing to receive new information only that would supplement the discussion that happened at the planning commission. That type of process would maybe allay a concern that the council would have that they can't hear from people or something like that without creating the problems that having two hearings has.
Sure.
I just thought that was an interesting like hybrid option that may just build just like a little bit of public hearing flexibility into, into the process, allow the council to use it if it thinks it's necessary.
Yeah.
He was very much, he was very much like in favor of the idea of the hearing should happen at the, at the planning commission and the council should watch the hearing and basically take in all the feedback that way. And then if there's additional information that's needed, bring it in in a more limited way. But that way people aren't moving around the planning commission process and going directly to the council. So, I don't know, everything, he agreed with you, Jimmy.
Agreed with us, us as a body. I guess, you know, one piece of that too is the communication. So if, if there is a change, I mean, the point you brought up of, you know, having your wife, what would you do if you wanted to bring a matter before like the city and maybe, and this should continue on if we don't get resolution with the process changing, but how can we help the city better communicate its process? And, you know, if we communicate it very well and show that there is a potential for a hybrid, I, I think that would sit a little better too, if people know the process a little more apparently and easily. So anyways, cool. Good to hear that's still a point. Commissioner Miranda?
Are we done with this topic? I don't want to, I want to change the topic, so.
Change it.
Okay. So I want to talk about climate change. So it's, we see a lot of stuff in the news about climate change lately, the past five years. And it's easy, I think, for us as a body to, and as residents ourselves, to, you know, worry about Edina, you know, and, and see our local history and kind of project that to the future. And, and it's easy to dissociate ourselves from, from the big effects of climate change by saying that, oh, that's somewhere else. You know, I mean, like the, New York had, you know, a QI of 400 or something. It was like the worst air quality in the entire world just last week. And, and, you know, that's somewhere else, it's not really us or whatever. And, you know, us driving 10% less isn't going to affect New York's air quality, whatever. And, you know, to an extent that's true, but I, and other things like Fort Lauderdale getting 26 inches of rain in a day, you know? But then, you know, Southern Minnesota got five inches of rain in a day a few weeks ago. And the thing is, we're seeing more and more things that actually affect Minnesota. There was something in the Star Tribune the other day about farmers in Minnesota, so this Berry Farm, and they're working, they're having this problem with a fruit fly called Drosophila, which it's a spotted Drosophila or something, and it never used to infect Minnesota. But because we have warmer springs and warmer winters, it can overwinter here now. And so it's kind of decimating their, their crops. And so now they're working on, you know, with, with universities on genetic engineering to try to create sterile fruit flies that they can't replicate and whatnot. So, and in, in Morningside neighborhood, you know, they've completely redone Weber Park and Weber Woods is now Weber Lake. And to good effect because it, it stores water because that neighborhood is basically, I mean, luckily, I live on the top of the hill, but at the bottom of the hill, it's, it's very low and water is a huge problem, it's been a problem there for years. And it's only getting worse with climate change. So we look at things like, you know, density and setbacks and all these little things that, oh, well, here's our rules and here's what we've done in the past and, you know, we're just a sleepy little suburb, you know, we shouldn't worry about this too much, but, or even things like affordable housing. And it's like, you know, to really affect climate change, I think Edina should be a leader and, you know, we need to change how we do things. This is why, one reason I wanted to look at areas of change is, you know, I think we need to think bigger as a, as a commission and as a city in terms of the kind of change that we really need to do. So we have the Southdale Guidelines, which we worked on for years, right? We, you guys worked on for years. And they talk about, you know, density and building height and whatnot. And it's not just because, you know, that's pretty or that's, you know, fits into a particular pattern or whatever. Nowadays, with our climate action plan and the need for climate action change, you know, density is important because then you need, you need to travel less, you need to drive less, you can, things are more walkable in the area that you're in. And so I think it's incumbent on us to, when we see things like this affordable housing plan, you know, and there are some people calling for, you know, making it less dense and having, having it lower in heights and less units and whatnot, it's like, that's not really affecting climate change and it's not really, it's not really addressing climate change. And we are not going to like upzone, I don't think, anyway. We're not going to upzone our entire city the way some cities have been doing, but I do think, you know, we have targeted areas that the city has historically worked towards our, our small area plans where we have more density and more walkable areas and whatnot. And I think it's really incumbent upon us as a commission, especially when we're doing our 2024 plan, to, to look at these things and say, okay, where can we really maximize density and walkability in areas that are, you know, not in single family home areas? And I think we might have more opportunities than we think we do. So I think it's something that, as it affects Minnesota more and more, and, you know, you look at the, the, it's not smog, you look at the smoke that's out there today, you know, and it's, it's scary. I mean, you know, you look at, we have an older house, there's lots of windows and you see, you know, rays of light coming in and they're orange and they're pink, they're not yellow like the sun is. And, you know, I'm old, I'm going to die soon, but I worry about, you know, our children, we always talk about, oh, this, you know, children in the school district and everything. And what are we really doing to address climate change so that our future residents and the children that grow up to maybe live here in the future have a place where they don't have to wear masks? You know, I mean, I have friends who are doing sporting events and with weather like this, or weather with smoke like this, you know, you have to wear masks when you work outside or play, or when you play outside. So it's, it's, it's a really big deal and I don't think anybody at any level of government is really addressing it. And so the only power I have is here on the commission, and so I encourage all of us to really maximize anything we can do for climate change.
Thank you, Lou. As an, as a fellow engineer, I'm just natural oriented towards solutions. That jogged some memory in mind, we talked about how Minneapolis did, you know, in 20, their 2040 update, you know, basically allowed three triplexes to be built almost anywhere in the city. So there is, to your point, there's areas of Edina that look like areas of Minneapolis, you know? It's not all of Edina, so it's, it might not even be small areas that we could start thinking about. And, and I, and I forget what our standard is, but an idea I have, a neighbor of mine just recently developed an old house in Minneapolis, maybe three blocks from our border, but it, there's three units in it and you can't really tell. It fits the character, you know, they have alleys there, so it works. But if we, Carrie, if we did stuff like field trips, I know we have to, is, do we technically have to notify the public really?
Yes.
Okay. If there's over, if there's a quorum essentially.
Right. And that's a good thing, the public can come with on a field trip.
Well, it's just, I mean, hey, let's go into this place and a thousand people show up might not work out, but.
They won't show up.
Yeah, they won't show up. That's, that's just an idea that I had, that, that neighbor was open to, so it's something I might send an email out to, because I think for change to like happen, like you have to see what it could look like and also feel what it could look like. And, I mean, from what they're proposing and what they actually built, it's, I think it just, they just got their CO like this week. So, I mean, it's done and you could see this fitting into a similar neighborhood in Edina, you know? And what's the difference three blocks across a border? You know, there's really not much difference in feel and use, right? I mean, the certain sides of Edina are very like their neighbor. So maybe there are certain areas that, oh, hey, we look at and this is maybe areas of potential change, but I think that could get people thinking about what change could look like here. So expect an email and the whole city to be invited. Anything else? All right. Oh, yes, there we go.
So it brings me, I guess it makes me think of our Cahill plan and discussion we had at our work session, right? So as we go about this and as we talk about density and residential and whatnot, right, I would just counter and just remind that you need somewhere to live, to play and to work, right? So just zoning everything residential for the sake of putting more density, right? There has to be a counterbalance in terms of, like I said at the, at our review with, about the Cahill district. If you push those jobs and that, those kinds of businesses further outside of the city, you've negated what you accomplished with your density by telling me I have to drive an hour away, right? So there is a, there is a push and a shove, we can't just make Edina, you know, a sea of apartment buildings, right, that everybody has to commute outwards from to go work, right? That doesn't accomplish much. So just keep that in mind as we go about these kind of types of things.
Just one action item from the last council meeting. The council did approve the revised conditional use permit for interlocking for the change out of their building materials. And that's it for me.
All right, well, then I think that's it for us. So last item, adjournment. What a motion.
I motion to adjourn second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting has been adjourned. Thank you. All right.